All right, everyone. My son has requested that I hit the gavel. So I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order. He didn't want to hit it, so... Yes, go ahead and hit it. Going to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 6:09 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Navarrete, Wilson, here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams. Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
For the record, Alderman Williams and Alderman Navarrete have excused absence for tonight's meeting. I believe they have provided reports to the colleagues. Can everyone please join us in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
............................................................
So again, joining me tonight will be my assistant, my son, Preston Jones. He's going to give me advice and just come and assist.
Is he our parliotarian tonight?
Yes, yes. He's going to bang this gavel and keep order tonight, right? He'll be all right. We'd like to also, at this point, call up Pastor Cortland Stokes to offer prayer.
Good evening. Just for the record, I would like to let the men and women of the council know that I am available for spiritual needs or prayer should any of the constituents in your areas need that. I'll make my information available to the office of the mayor if that need would arise. Let us pray. Our God and Father, how grateful we are tonight for a reasonable portion of our health and strength for life. We're so grateful to be able to come before you in the land of the living. We give you praise and honor because you've been so good to us. We thank you for the peace and safety that we have enjoyed. We thank you for providing for our needs. We ask today, oh God, that you look on those who may be without, who are less fortunate, who may stand in need, and we ask that you would supply. Your word declares that we should trust you with all of our hearts and lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our path. We thank you tonight for these leaders who are assembled in this room as they conduct this business with honor and with dignity. And we give you praise for what you will do and what you are doing in this great city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. So at this point, we will go into public forum. And before we bring up residents, we have two presentations. One, we know that the family is getting antsy, so we're going to call her up and her family up. She's doing a presentation to the City Council. Calumet City resident who wrote these two books that will be illustrated in the library. One is "My Beautiful Brown Skin," and the other one is "Just Like My Mommy." So we're going to call them up to say a few words, and then we're going to take pictures and then so they can introduce themselves. So come on up, Kenesha. And we have Morgan, who not only wrote the book, but please introduce your beautiful family to the City Council and to Calumet City.
Thank you for having me. My name is Kenesha Davis, and this is my daughter.
Morgan.
Mum.
Dara.
Mum. And we... My daughter, she's in fourth grade, and she wrote these two books, and they're also in Calumet City Public Library as well.
You want to say some words, Morgan?
I guess so.
It's all right. You're just here for the pictures, right? So she's requested a picture with the City Council so if the council can come up front and take a picture with the family.
Thank you so much.
Where? Want to join?
...............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And Kenesha, if you can make sure that the City Council gets copy, every colleague, every council member gets a copy of the books. Appreciate it. Next, we have from NICOR, Laura Higdon. Laura's going to talk about a program that is in Alderman-Paddens Committee about the gas meter relocation program. This is for residents. And then afterwards, Laura, if you can make sure you give Alderman-Paddens your information. That's Alderman James Padden, the Chairman of Public Utilities.
Yes, sir. Yes. Kind of nervous, so I don't do this usually, so I'm an element here. First of all, thank you very much for allowing NICOR to present this. We call it the Inside Meter Move-Out Program. And this is an investment Illinois initiative throughout NICOR footprint. And what this program is, is we're moving all of the gas meters, as many as we can, to the outside. And, you know, within the city of Kales... Within the Kales City, we've got approximately 600 locations where we've identified that not only does the meter going to be moved out, but the service is going to be replaced as well. So I've left a packet of information with our communication package. We try to communicate with customers at least three or four times to schedule an appointment, to go inside their homes, to work with them, to identify an outside location, and also to make sure that we follow up with the landscape paving, which is also is always the Achilles' heel, if you will. So that's in it very briefly, the program. We intend to do this work. It's going to last for probably another year, year and a half, to get the work done. But we have one contractor that's going to be doing this work, Kingwood McCoy. They've already been doing some work in City of Kales... City, I'm sorry. And they'll be the ones to continue on until the program's completed. So if there... Is there any questions at all?
Go ahead, all.
Thank you for coming to present this. I did my best to try and get this information out in our last meeting. So you've left information for the residents a couple of times about the one that are part of this program. How long is it? Is it a little too big a process?
Usually, what we try to do, it's all dependent on the customer calling and making that appointment to move the meter out. We arrange our work around that. So the first day is where we would go ahead and we would excavate the area, install the new, and then after we do that move-out, that transition, which usually lasts... The customer's without gas for maybe an hour, hour and a half. No, excuse me, maybe one to two hours. But after that transition, we cut off the old service backfill, and we have a landscape paving ticket that's made out, and we have another contractor come back to do those repairs. So to answer your question, it's usually one to two day. But once again, it all depends on the customer's engagement.
And it's no cost to the customers, right?
Correct. There's no cost to the customers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Before I leave, I just wanted to introduce Booker Hatcher. He's the construction supervisor that will be in charge of this project in City of Kales City, and he'll be the one that is going to be overseeing the contract.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Thank you very much.
When you reach out to our residents to perform their service, we repeatedly tell our residents, for obvious reasons, to not divulge any of their utility account information to someone who might present themselves at their front door. You won't be asking any account information?
No, no, none at all.
Because you might meet with some resistance if you did.
I agree, and as they should. The thing is too, is that all of our contractors have carried a badge, so if a customer would like to have them present, they will. If they don't present, we encourage them to then call, and call the police or call in NICOR to verify. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for presenting. If you can give the Alderman your information, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to present during public forum? Joining us tonight is also my beautiful wife, Suprina Jones. Suprina, you want to stand up?
I don't want to pout, please.
Yes.
Yes.
We don't want to have to remove you from...
I just want to do a point of personal privilege and wish you a very happy belated birthday, and I want to thank you all for coming in to celebrate with us earlier. And if you all wouldn't mind joining me and just wishing the mayor a very happy belated happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. No Stevie Wonder this time?
Oh, no.
All right, everyone. Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. We'd like to remove the committee of the whole meetings on August 15th. We'll be at the next City Council meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes of the meetings? So can someone make a motion to approve the minutes as stated on the agenda?
Motion second.
Motion made by Alderman Padden, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item six, reports standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, and good evening, public that are tuned in by way of television. Just wanted to bring to the attention of you all, the city has received $686,000 in grant money. This grant is for the rebuild downtowns, Main Streets Capital Grant through the Illinois Also, we received an additional $4 million for the lead service line. I believe the mayor mentioned it at a previous meeting regarding the funds for the lead service line. The city attorney can speak to these measures to update the public and the City Council if you wish.
Well, we're actually going to... City Engineer, Kim, can you also share the good news about Pulaski Road?
Yes, yes, lots of good news, and kudos to Richard for writing that great grant that we got for the Main Street program for Burnham Avenue. That's exciting news. There are only 50 of those grants given out in the state, and there are very few here in Cook County, so it's a very competitive type of award. So it's exciting because a good new vision for Burnham will be coming up. But on the lead service lines will be the bids opening... Rather, the bid notification is going out now. We look to have 45 days, and then we look forward to some qualified bidders going on that and submitting, and that would go to construction early next year. Those homes that have been identified in this first phase are in the sixth ward, so we're looking forward to that program. And then, yes, we have bidding that will be going on or that was concluded for Pulaski Road, resurfacing from Burnham Avenue all the way west to Michigan City Road, and Gallagher Asphalt was the winning bid on that, qualified, and they are going to be starting construction on that here in the early fall, and we look forward to getting that road finally smoothed out, right? So that's good news. Buffalo Avenue is finishing up construction and resurfacing, and Burnham, as well, is beginning their final coat here in the next few days, so that's exciting to see that project concluded. So a lot of good things happening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor, and us all. See you later, sir.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams is not here. Public Utilities, Alderman Padden.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, I spoke with Benita from ComEd. She's our external affairs rep with ComEd on my way to the meeting this evening, and we will be talking tomorrow to find out her availability to attend a Public Utilities Committee meeting. I know ComEd has been sending all of us a lot of really great information about initiatives that they have going on and programs that they've got going on that could benefit our residents. So Benita and I will be scheduling a Public Utilities meeting in the coming weeks with the availability, of course, of the rest of the committee members, although all of my colleagues are invited to attend, and she will be here to present what ComEd's got going on that could help all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordnance and Resolutions Committee will be calling a meeting next week to talk about the Crime Free Housing Ordnance and some other ordinances. That is all, Mayor. Just look out for that information.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. On behalf of the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of the... All of my colleagues, residents, businesses, and organizations who volunteered, donated, and attended the Back to School Fair. It was very successful. We had over 1,000 people registered, and we distributed over 1,100 book bags and school supplies. Thank you so very much. This was my very first official city event for Back to School. It was my 17th annual event as Ms. Monet. I would like to call a meeting for Public... For Health, Education, and Welfare, and I will have to see what availability... What the availability or the schedule is for my committee members. So that will be posted online once we have that. August 26th is the deadline to appeal property taxes through Cook County. You can go to AldermanWilson.com for more information, or you can go to Cook County website directly. October, it is my hope to plan a housing education seminar, and that information will be posted shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licenses, Alderman Smith.
Permits and License Committee, a meeting will be called at the next first available date in September. That information will be provided.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council Reports, let's start on this side. Alderman Smith, City Council Reports.
I've got a report.
No report.
I have a report.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Padden, City Council Report.
Thank you. As usually happens at this time of year, you know, people start reaching out again about sidewalks. You know, the 2022 sidewalk list has been closed and, I think, completely bid out. I believe construction on that project is going to be starting shortly after Labor Day, if I'm not mistaken. Delayed a little bit this year because of the strike at the materials plant, but we are already adding to the list for 2023 sidewalk program. I think I've already sent at least one or two to our engineer. So if you have a sidewalk that is in need of repair, please reach out to my office at 708-891-8196, or JPattan@kalymetcity.org. If it's in really bad shape, I think the mayor may have some money left in this year's program, so we may be able to squeeze it in there, but otherwise sidewalk repairs are going to have to be deferred to 2023, so get those requests in now so we can get you on the list. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go to Alderman Gardner, so we have all of these August birthdays. So on the same day, August 20th, right? Attorney Patrick Wallace birthday, and also Alderman Gardner's birthday, so let's...
That's a correction. Mine is the 19th.
19?
The 19th.
This is the one who had the birthday.
I would just like to wish Alderman Gardner a happy 60th birthday. I saw that somewhere. I'm not going to say where I saw it, but I saw it.
I believe it's in his book.
Alderman, your report?
Yes. Mayor, do we have a report for Alderman Navarrete for his Public Works Committee report? Someone go ahead and read that. We'll just go through his first report and then I'll do my fifth report. So for his Public Works Committee report, on behalf of Chairman Navarrete, Public Works Committee is looking to have a meeting in September. Item four discussion will be related to making housing in Calumet City through the land of the Inspection Services Department and Public Works Department. The city has implemented ordinances and hired outside consultants to help collect data and remedy issues of abandoned and blinded properties through the South Suburban Land Bank and other private programs. This meeting will review data collected and look at impacts of the implemented programs with the goal of recommending the next steps to the City Council. For his first word report, I'm going to have him along with Alderman Navarrete. First word will have a town hall meeting on September 21st at 6:30. The meeting will be held at the BMW located 664 Hersch Avenue, located at the corner of Pulaski Road and Hersch Avenue. Item four discussion will be related to the Burnham Avenue revitalization plan. The completion of the street resurancing will mark the completion of three of the recommendations that are outlined in the plan. Related to this was the announcement that the Burnham Court Department has been selected to receive a rebuild, which I mentioned earlier in my report, the rebuild downtown and Main Streets Capital Grant through the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to help revitalize commercial corridors. Thank you to our Economic Development Department, Val Williams, Richard Chambers, and Christina for writing the grant, along with our City Engineers' Farmers Group for providing technical support and exhibits of the corridor. That concludes my report in the absence of Alderman Navarrete. Now to the fifth report. Good evening, fifth ward residents. Those of you that are tuned in, those of you that are live in person. I would like to thank all of the residents that came out to the fifth ward event, the back-to-school event. I would like to thank volunteers from the fifth ward, American Printy, they donated book bags. I would like to thank the St. Baptist Church of Chicago Networks Barca College, donated 100 free haircuts for students in need of back-to-school haircuts. I would like to thank Mayor Jones, Treasure Target, Clerk Figs. I also want to thank the Police and Fire Commission, Brian Kirchner. He was out there on grill, and he grilled the food for us. It was a lot of food, and it was a great event. I want to thank the Police and Fire Department for coming out. Their presence was very much felt. Children enjoyed seeing the firemen and police cars. And last but not least, I want to thank the Lincoln Elementary School District and their partnership to this year's great event, and also the school board members that were planning the process. For residents that are in need of services, you guys will continue to call my office, 708-891-8195. If you need to talk to, just give me a call. I would like to thank Public Works Department. They've been aggressively handling issues and pretending to try and shed degrees in the alley, so I want to thank them for being on top of that. And I also just want to, again, wish the mayor a happy 80th birthday tonight. But that's all I've got tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Happy 90th birthday to you as well. Alderman Tillman, City Council Reports.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came out and participated in a third and fourth ward Back to School barbecue. This year was one of our best turnouts, and unfortunately, we ran out of book bags. We did, however, order some more, and we started distributing those as we just got them. And if any resident didn't get book bags or supplies and still want them, give my office a call, 708-891-8193. Again, 708-891-8193. Alderman Williams will be doing formal thank yous to every sponsor and everybody that assisted, so I will not go through that list right now, but I do thank everybody that helped us and participated. I also want to thank all the residents that participated in River Oaks Estates barbecue and town hall last Friday. The owner flew in from Texas and made a number of promises to the residents in that area, and my office will absolutely follow up with him, starting with the security cameras that he promised to install within the next couple of weeks. I do see that the fence was just completed. I look forward to those follow-up discussions with the residents as we're planning to do a meeting in that area quarterly. Last but not least, we will not have a town hall meeting this September. As you all know, we have our town hall meeting every month, the first Monday of the month at 6:30 in Downey Park. September is Labor Day, so we will not have a meeting. We will see you all in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking all of the second ward residents that came out with their shirts to volunteer for the Back to School Fest. It made the day of the children and families in the park. You didn't have to do it, but you gave up your time. It was a great community event where everyone was on one page, and families were together having fun. Thank you to Public Works. I've made several calls to Public Works, not asking for anything, Mayor, just saying thank you. They are doing a spectacular job throughout this city, and especially my ward, and I have to give credit when credit is due. Phenomenal. And so if anybody from Public Works is here, thank you. It is not easy. You are always out, and no matter what the weather is, and you're taking care of the city for our residents, and I appreciate you. September 7th is the second ward meeting. It's the first Wednesday of every month. This meeting will be held at the Public Safety Training Center, 24 State Street, from 6:30 PM to 8 o'clock PM. We will have police and fire, inspectional services, and a representative from the clerk's office, as well as a special guest. September 10th is an afternoon with the Alderwoman. We will board a bus leaving Calumet City headed to Harris Casino, where we will enjoy an Italian buffet, learn how to play poker, if you wish, and head back at 4 o'clock to be back in town by 5 PM. We have 20 seats open. If you would like to attend this event, it's free for our residents, especially... Well, the residents of the second ward. the residents of the second ward, please text your name and address to 708-586-4990. That's 708-586-4990. Again, that's September 10th, an afternoon with the Alderwoman. We will have one meeting and one outing a month. If you have concerns regarding trees, grass, sidewalks, garbage, and parking, please email me at mwilson@cayumetcity.org. That's mwilson@cayumetcity.org. In the subject line, please indicate what the email is in regards to. Grass, trees, sidewalks, or parking. I will email a request to ordinance and resolutions to see if we have any update on parking, because it's being, becoming troublesome on some blocks. A reminder, we have no box truck parking signs throughout our ward. You can be ticketed for a box truck on a residential street. And finally, during the back-to-school event, the second ward made friends with the bear. I'm talking about Buddy Bear Car Wash. I had an opportunity to speak with the owner. Some of the questions that residents have emailed me in the past, I did ask, and we will discuss on September 7th during our meeting. And we're going to go and move forward in faith, in trusting that he is committed to our ward like he says he is.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Item eight is informational items to be accepted and placed on file. There are two items. Does anyone have any questions regarding the two items submitted? If not, is there a motion to accept these items, place it on file? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. Item nine is our new business items, A1 through 12. Are there any questions regarding new business items 9A1 through 12?
I have a question about item number six, Mayor. Why does this item require an ordinance amendment to place a sign?
Chief Kolash, can you step up and explain the new tactic we want to take? And I know we have some questions regarding the ordinance that stops the police department.
Sure. What we're trying to do is discourage the semi trucks, the box trucks are having not only aesthetically unpleasing to the eye, but they're causing damage to the infrastructure. So the goal of, we don't want them parked anywhere in the city unless they're loading and unloading. The state routes kind of allow for them to go to specific areas, but others they're not allowed to. So the whole idea is to get as much signage out there as we can get out there to prohibit that from happening. If you guys have seen River Oaks West, we've erected barriers around the whole place. The trucks are just parked where we park, and they're damaging the roads and the infrastructure beneath it. So that's the idea, is to get as much signage out there as a deterrent, and then if the deterrent hasn't been working with the signage, then the citations and prosecutions will happen after that.
And none of that language is contained currently in the ordinance, so it will come before your committee, as we're directing the city attorney to draft the ordinance. So you'll see all the language, the amended language that's suggested in the ordinance.
Does the current ordinance prohibit box trucks but not semi trucks, or is there no prohibition right now?
Well, I think it's the signage is the issue of some more signage out there. I think that the current signage is the box trucks, but yes, it's a weight limit as far as the parking in the roads.
There doesn't have to be. There doesn't have to be a sign erected, right? We have an ordinance up.
No, it's another deterrent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know there's one particular box truck that I get calls about all of the time on a residential street.
Yeah. And Chief, how many trucks have we towed from River Oaks West and streets? It's, I know I call you every night and every day about those box, those trucks that park over there.
As of about a week and a half ago, it was a dozen from River Oaks West.
Wow.
Yeah. And so I've worked with the new owner of that property. They don't want the trucks there. They're going to put more signage out there. They've entered into an agreement with a relocation service, they're actually using Wes's towing, so they're not authorized to be there. The trucks are seen on the property by Wes's, they're unoccupied, they get towed off from the property. So it's, we're trying to best we can to discurb it. I mean, the big issue has been the truck stop is down the street. They're going to the truck stop, the truck stop's full, they're coming over to us, and we don't want it by us. They're causing damage, we don't want that.
Okay. Any other questions, Alderman?
No, I guess, well, it's not a question, but I guess the city attorney should draft the ordinance to include all of Cayumet City rather than just the second ward, as the agenda states.
Okay. I'm sorry. It did say. So with that amended language for item six to include all of Cayumet City, is there a motion to approve new business items 9A through 12?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. A motion approved for new business items 9A through 12. Next item are building permits. You have the building permits before you on the agenda. Are there any questions regarding the building permits? If not, is there a motion or entertain a motion to approve building permits, new fence construction, sorry?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes to approve the new fence construction on the agenda. Item C are resolutions and ordinances. Item two, we will table until Senator Meeks, Pastor Meeks can attend the council. The next resolution is for Tim Hardaway that has been requested. Tim Hardaway is coming to Cayumet City on September 2nd. Would like to invite the city council to the library on September 2nd. Tim Hardaway will be inducted into the Hall of Fame, and he's looking to establish youth programs in Cayumet City and work with champs and work with the city council. So he will be at the library on September 2nd, where we will present the resolution for his induction into the Hall of Fame. And just for the record, Illinois, Chicago has only had four NBA Hall of Famers, Don Cheeks, and I can't remember the other three. So Tim Hardaway will be the fifth from the state of Illinois inducted into the Hall of Fame.
There's a fifth on the, a future fifth on the Bulls right now. Pride of my alma mater, ILL, I O Desumo will be in the Hall of Fame at some point.
So you remember that, guys, because he said that today. So yeah, if you guys, we have on a resolution, if you can approve, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution. C1 on the agenda?
Some.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Before we go to item D, we'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for employment of a specific individual pending and threatening potential litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session at 6:47 p.m.?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Patton. All in favor? Everyone, we will be in executive session briefly, and we'll come back. We still have matters to vote on, so we'll be back. Is there a motion to return the order of regular order of business?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second to the motion to return the regular order of business? Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
We are back on the record. We have item D left on the agenda, D1 through, 1 through 26, and we'll take 27 separately.
Can we take 6 separately as well, please?
Take item 1 through 6, 1 through 5. Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 5 under D? Financial matters?
Some.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call, Clerk, please.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 6 on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve item 6 on the agenda as stated?
Discussion? This is for a newsletter we never received.
Newsletter, I believe, went out. Do you understand, correct?
It's at Printy's, yes, in the manhouse. So it's not, been delivered yet.
For September newsletter, September, October?
I'm sorry. So the draft, um, yes, and I'm sorry, it is at the printer.
For September and October, correct?
For.
July, August.
So the one in August, just, there's only one newsletter that's been produced, one draft. And so we do one every other month, right? So by month.
You know, let's table this item till the next city council meeting. Let's table item number 6 on the agenda. Item 7 through. 26. Is there a motion to approve items 7 through 26 on the agenda? 27 we'll take separately, Mr. Trezor.
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Smith to approve items 7 through 26 on the agenda.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. Item 27 on the agenda, approved by builders team. Is there a motion to approve item 27 on the agenda?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Patton?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. Motion passes. Thank you for your time. We're at unfinished business. We'll start on this side. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Final, please be safe. We have answered the calls and replied to the text messages of the occurrences that have gone on this week throughout the city. There are pops of violence everywhere throughout the Southland. I trust our police and fire departments to serve and protect us. Just be very safe and cautious. If you see something, say something. Please continue to be kind. An act of kindness goes a long way. Please be accountable and responsible. When you move into any community, you are also adopting the neighbors and neighborhood that you're moving into. Please read the room, read your block. If there are certain things that are not done on your block, don't do them. That includes barbecuing on the front porch, bringing hair on the front porch, certain things that we just don't find to be common practice. Please be kind. If you need me, call me, 708-586-4990. That's 708-586-4990. Second ward, I have extended the registration for the day trip, the afternoon with the Alderwoman on September 10th until August 31st. You have until August 31st to register by texting your name and address to 708-586-4990. Thank you. God bless the second ward. God bless Cayumet City.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Tillman, unfinished business?
I just have one thing. I want to wish Director Tillman a happy 35th anniversary. Celebrated that, I think, last week.
Happy anniversary.
35, 35, so that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
I guess I'm going to wish Director Tillman a happy 35th anniversary. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Alderman Patton, unfinished?
No one's finished.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Yes, just want to remind the seven ward residents, the monthly town hall, next town hall is September the 10th, Saturday, from 10 a.m. to noon. Please come, refreshments, light refreshments will be served. And bring your questions and concerns. Also, please continue to report any blighted or vacant properties that need attention. If there are any questions, please contact the office at 708-891-8197, or email asmith@cayumetcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:16 p.m.?
Some.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 7:16 p.m. Thank you, everyone, for watching. Thank you, Alderman.